Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of Glendale City Council of July 10, 2018. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Garpadian.
Here.
Mary Sonnian.
Here.
What is next on the agenda?
Next is the Clerk's report. The agenda for the July 10, 2018, special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Friday, July 6, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Mr. Mayor and Council, before you today is Director of Community Development regarding requests for proposals, RFP for tech accelerator program. One A is motion authorizing staff to prepare an issue in RFP seeking qualified respondents to submit a proposal for the operation and program management of a tech accelerator located in Glendale. I should note that item two on this agenda is also a closed session item that was added. Two A is a conference with real property negotiators. Property location 315 through 331 North Verdugo Road, negotiating parties Catchtree and our family trust and agency negotiators that will be attending closed session are Yasmin Beers, Rubik Galanian, Mike Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Philip Lanzapin, Peter Zovak, Mike Fortney, Darlene Sanchez, Monique Gulleniken, and Jennifer Hiromoto. Instructions to negotiators will concern price and terms for acquisitions of property. That brings us back to one A.
Thank you. Ms. Hiromoto.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's been nearly two years since the City Council unanimously approved the Glendale Tech Strategy, and since then, staff has been very persistent in just knocking off the nearly 60 recommendations that were on that list. We've actually had several wins as a result of it, and council has been directly involved, if not the leaders, on many of these wins. The recommendations really fall into five main buckets. We have one, marketing Glendale as a place for innovation and entrepreneurship. So, one of the examples there is we've taken on programming such as Glendale Tech Week and Glendale Tech on Tap efforts, which now have about 1,400 members. Another bucket is promoting a business-friendly environment. Again, the Glendale City Council was a part of this when you approved that business expansion grant for Service Titan, which ultimately will receive or will see a total net increase of 225 jobs. Other examples of that business-friendly environment, the Glendale Relationship Initiation Team, where we've been proactively visiting with businesses, has been another way just to take the temperature in the business environment within Glendale. And we recently held the Executives and Innovation Roundtable. That was a wonderful way to really take, again, the temperature of some of the top executives here in Glendale and hear what some of their concerns are, and we also learned about their appetite for the accelerator program. Kind of that other bucket within the strategies has been supporting Glendale's quality of life. So while this may not seem like it has a direct tie to tech per se, these are things like the holiday trolley, where we learned that folks, especially in their 700 and 800 North brand, directly said that they would like to see a holiday trolley, and the streetcar as well is something that especially our office users would like to see a streetcar so that they can better get to and from work. Finally, the creating and supporting a tech workforce. Through Tech Week, we've been able to create mentorship programs. We've also partnered up with Glendale Community College and Professional Development Center. So you can see, we've really been working with our different partners throughout the city to try to implement the tech strategy. That final bucket, though, is creating a space for tech, which is why we're here today. We've seen some wonderful efforts to further modernize some of our existing office space. CBRE and the Masonic Temple is an example of that, and we do have a wonderful selection of Class A office space here in Glendale. And as you may recall, creating that accelerator program was one of the goals that was initiated and laid out as part of the 2017-2018 goals for council. So with that, I would like to invite Cecilia Estolano. She is the co-founder and co-CEO of Estolano-Lessar Advisors. This was the firm that was hired to prepare the tech accelerator, excuse me, the tech program, the strategy, and subsequently hired on the, for the implementation. I should note that Cecilia and her team, Cynthia is here as well, they've been working hand-in-hand with us. They were there recently at the Executives Innovation Roundtable, and with that, I would like to bring Cecilia up to talk in more detail about the accelerator.
Good afternoon, Mary Sonnian, members of the City Council. It's great to be before you again. Really excited to talk to you about the accelerator proposal. It's just one more piece of this overall strategy. So what we're going to talk to you today is about that last piece, which is creating a space for tech. Let me see if I do this right, Cynthia? How do I advance? Click the left button. Okay. So we're going to talk about why it's important to have the right kind of space for tech. I'm also going to give you a very brief overview of what an accelerator is versus an incubator. There was quite a bit of discussion around this when we did the tech strategy for you all, and we want to just remind you of the distinction. Then I'll go through some of the highlights of the contents of the request for proposals, underscore some of the benefits of putting together an accelerator, and then next steps. Okay. So, why a space for tech? What we learned during our year and a half working with you on a tech strategy is that tech companies definitely want to have their particular type of space for tech, and what we're blessed with in Glendale is you already have a diversity of spaces. In Brand Boulevard, you have wonderful space for offices. It's a good place for digital companies to start. West Glendale gives us an opportunity for manufacturing, so if folks kind of scale up prototyping, they can expand in your manufacturing area. And then North Glendale, with the hospital there, actually provides an opportunity for your bio-science tech companies, which you're pretty strong in, actually. So what we really want to do here is to create a space for startups to kind of get off the ground and really accelerate into the next stage where they can really grow. And the idea is if we do an accelerator here in Glendale, provide some seed funding that will attract private funding, then those tech companies, those startups that you have a good number of here in Glendale or might want to come to Glendale, will grow, they'll get to know the city, and then they'll want to stay, and you'll get to have the benefit of their investment. I'm clearly challenged here. Okay. So, what are the differences between space for tech, right? What are the differences between accelerator and incubator and no action? And this kind of gives you a quick schematic to show you the difference. One of the key things we have is an accelerator is really different than an incubator. They sound like the same thing, and a lot of times people use them interchangeably, but they're quite different. So what you do in an accelerator is you're actually recruiting really high-quality startups, and as a cohort, a small number of them. It's competitive to get into the class, so you want to have good-quality startups, and then you wrap them around with services and mentorship, and you have a focused period of time, six weeks, 10 weeks, 12 weeks, depends on what the proposal is. You give them direct mentorship, so they learn how to get financing, for example, how to go to that next stage, how to do marketing, how to attract VCs, all of the things that go into being a successful tech company at that next stage. And then you kind of get them ready to make pitches to potential investors, because that's what's going to scale them up. And as I said, it's a time-specific area, and this is for a relatively small cost to the city. You can attract some other investment that will fund the total accelerator. But it's limited in time, it's limited in space, and then you try to graduate these guys. Incubator's different. An inc, yeah?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
You said mentorship. Who's giving the mentorship?
So it would be experienced companies that have already gone from startup to full-scale will actually take on as mentors these startups and say, okay, here's the next step, here's how you get the right C-suite team, here's how you make yourself attractive to venture capitalists, here's how you make yourself attractive to angel investors, and they really walk them through the process, soup to nuts, and they're available on call. So it's their mentor, and it's an experienced businessperson who wants to help them.
What's the mechanism by which this comes about? Does the management company that's managing the accelerator bring the two together?
Correct. Yeah, so they'll, because of their contacts in the field, they'll be able to line up a number of mentor companies and individuals who are experienced in doing this, and then they'll be able to pair them up with the accepted class or cohort of startups. And this is critical, because they have to have a relationship of trust, and they have to have somebody they can go to with questions that they're embarrassed to say they have questions about. So it's a close relationship, and what you see sometimes when these are successful is that mentor helps that startup grow. They may take an ownership picture. They may invest in that company if they think they're really coming along, and they may introduce them to their investors. So then it creates this ecosystem of people investing in each other's companies and growing the talent here in Glendale. That's the idea.
One more thing.
Sure.
So, I come forward, I say, I have this idea, I want to make this small company.
Yeah.
And is there any standard, anything that we ask from the person, or just the person comes, he has this great ideas?
Yeah, that's the difference. So when you do an accelerator, you're putting out a call to startups that are already out there, and this is what the accelerator manager would do, is they create an application, they create up standards, and they ask the, and the startups have to apply to be accepted, and it is competitive. So they have to show that they have growth potential, they have to show that they have good management, they have a good idea, that makes a lot of sense. There's going to be certain criteria, and they're competing against other startups to even be accepted into the class. So it can't just be somebody with an idea. They already have to have a company that started up and getting going. You're not starting from scratch. You're starting.
So the accelerator will determine that.
Yeah.
That my idea will work?
That you have a potential for your business to grow and scale. The idea of an accelerator is, you can have a startup, maybe it's a great idea, but if you don't have the right team, the right idea, the right concept, the right, you know, sort of a combination of skills, you may not be able to take that great idea and move it to scale, right? So what they'll do is that accelerator manager will have a team of people who are experienced in startups and scaling startups evaluate those applications. They'll have venture capitalists sit on that review committee. They'll have other.
So the accelerator is the judge?
The accelerator, the manager and their team will review the applications, they accept them into the cohort, and then, once you've got that lottery ticket, once you've been accepted, now you're suddenly getting a ton of support, a ton of advice, and you're being kind of led through the journey of going from startup to the next stage.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So an incubator is different. An incubator is, you create a space, it's usually at virtually no cost or very low cost for a startup company to come in, and it could be some random person that's like, I've got this great idea, I need some space, can I come into your incubator? And folks say, okay, great, come on in your incubator. And usually there's some support services, and there may be some lectures, and there may be an opportunity to meet other businesses. They provide services, but they're just sort of there, and if they grow and they thrive over time, hopefully, we hope, they move out of that incubator and they scale someplace else, right? But the idea is you're giving them a safe space at low or no cost with some support services for them to grow. And there's not a time limit, generally, right? Some incubators sort of say, once you've hit a certain revenue, once you've hit a certain size, you must leave, or some others kind of let you stay for a long time. It's different, right? And this can be more costly, because you're essentially providing space for free or very low indefinitely. The idea about an incubator, it's around for a while, and it kind of nurtures these companies for years on end, and then they move on and up. They're not all successful, though, right? It's the nature of an incubator. And then the third option is no action. You sort of let it.
If we may, one second. Is this the one?
I just want to do, so the accelerator is more structured.
It's very structured.
Than the incubator.
Yeah. And time-limited.
Targeted.
Time-limited and targeted. And when we did the tech strategy for you guys a couple of years ago, part of it is we really wanted to appreciate where you all were as city. City of Los Angeles, for example, they did a clean tech incubator. I was a part of that when they did that, and they threw down big money, and it took them years to develop it, and we're talking multi-million dollars to develop this incubator. It got a lot of attention, but they're still, they still subsidize it heavily year after year. We have a sense that was not where you wanted to go. You guys really wanted to kind of test the water, and that's where we developed the concept that the accelerator might be the best example for you. So that's kind of the distinction between the accelerator and the incubator, and we wanted to give you a few examples. Make in L.A., and I can keep moving along if you guys are kind of heard enough of this, but Make in L.A. is focused on manufacturing. That's in Chatsworth in Los Angeles, and it's got a variety of technologies and equipment for companies to use, focused on trying to get manufacturing companies to go, to scale. Expert Dojo, which is in the bottom-left corner, that's in Santa Monica. It used to be in a restaurant in Santa Monica, and it's used for coworking, but they also have a lot of high-profile tech events, so that's also an accelerator, again, time-limited. They're terrific. Incubator's different. Pasadena Bio, Pasadena Bio has been around for a while, and they have now three locations, and they really nurture their company, and they're focused on bio-science. So they've got very expensive equipment. It's a big investment to create a successful bio-science incubator, and they've had some successes, but they also have companies that have been in there three to five to six years. They may stay for quite some time. And then the L.A. Clean Tech Incubator that I mentioned, they have a prototyping center, they have a 3D printer, they've got a workforce development. I mean, it's a big location, they've got solar panels. It's a showcase for the city of L.A. to show their clean tech.
Question.
Yeah.
Quick question. Pasadena Bio or L.A. Clean Tech Incubator, are they privately-owned companies, or they are companies that are sponsored by the city of, like Pasadena?
So, they're both nonprofits. The entities are nonprofit entities, but in the case of L.A. Clean Tech Incubator, it is located in a property owned by the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and they built out this old industrial area, and they put a lot of money in it.
Right.
So they're the landlords, but Clean Tech Incubator kind of manages the space for them and rents out spaces to other companies.
So they're like a management company?
Yeah, they're like, they're property management, but they also provide the services for these companies. But they also have nonprofits that are in there that aren't about tech, relatively about tech. They have, you know, climate resolve.
About the accelerator, like Make in L.A., are they privately-owned or?
They are also nonprofits. So typically, these are nonprofits. I think Expert Dojo is for-profit, is my recollection. That is for-profit, and it's interesting, because these guys are super-experienced tech-savvy dudes, so they could even invest in some of the companies if they think they really have potential. So they're eyeing them very carefully for financial upside.
Pasadena had one Idea Lab.
Idea Lab was just sort of one of the.
Was it an incubator or accelerator?
It's an incubator, and it's one of the first in this area, and has been very successful.
Do you have the, like, a success rate as to how many of them?
I don't have offhand.
Took off and scaled the business.
Yeah, I don't have offhand, but each.
I think that would be very important, too, for us to have.
Yeah, we can give you that. I mean, again, the thing about the incubator is it depends on how it's managed, and if they have screening mechanisms, and if it's sort of up and out. Some manage them and say, hey, three years, if you don't make it, you're out. Some let them stay for a lot longer.
Sure.
So.
And I had a friend who had a space in Idea Lab.
And they've had.
Didn't go much, didn't go far, but.
They didn't go far.
But they helped them a lot.
And Idea Lab is one of those places where they take an ownership interest, and they've had, all you need is a few successes to make a lot of money, but they, they've had a model.
And that's, I mean, that's the point, right? The success rate is very low.
Very low.
But you're shooting for that very low, very successful.
You hit one in 30, and it makes money, you're good. But you've got to hit one in 30, right? So it means you're subsidizing 29 that don't quite make it.
Okay.
So you were saying about, you were saying that there's a lot of, can we go back to the incubator screen?
Last view. Okay.
Yeah. There's a lot of equipment, specialized equipment at Pasadena Bio.
Yeah.
Biotech-related.
Correct.
And same with L.A. Clean Tech.
That is correct.
Who's invested in that equipment?
Those were done, they had grants, they had, the old redevelopment agency put a tremendous amount of money in that. They got an EDA grant, they've got workforce development grant, so they've poured a lot of grant funds in to make it happen.
And how did Pasadena Bio come about to be in Pasadena? Was it because of Caltech connection or?
It's partly that, Caltech, the proximity to other bio-science companies there. I don't believe the city gives them any ongoing support. I need to check, but I don't think they continue to give them ongoing support. They have a very close connection to actually Pasadena City College.
Okay.
So the leader there used to teach STEM and bio-science in Pasadena City College, so she really works closely with the companies and has a whole kind of pipeline and mentorship that she does with them.
It's interesting, they've created a micro-climate, a tech climate for themselves by having these incubators there, and I wonder if we were to compare the sheer volume of individuals involved with pure tech in Glendale and Pasadena, I wonder if they have more than we do. I suspect.
Well, they're bigger, but yeah.
They're bigger, they're more, they're older, they're more established, but again, I'm thinking of just the number of people that work for IT companies and tech in general.
Right. They have a very, very strong tech culture.
Right.
They've had Innovate Pasadena for several years, and I think we're at six years now, and that just runs on its own now.
They have Pasadena Angels, I mean, they have these investment groups.
And Idea Lab was kind of the granddaddy, right? With Caltech spinning out companies all the time, so they've been doing this a lot longer, and they have that reputation, and they market themselves very aggressively as the innovation place.
And I guess the point I'm making, or I guess the conclusion I wanted to reach, is that they've, you know, they've established these things, one after the other, building on every step, and, you know, capitalizing on the fact that Pasadena City College wanted to be a, you know, partner in a sense, and I'm sure Caltech was also somehow involved. And they've, now they're what you described them to be, they have this name, they've made a name for themselves of being a somewhat of a tech hub.
Right.
And we, I think we seem like we have a lot of the components already there, and we just got to fill in those gaps, and I, you know, I don't see why they should be any more of a well-known product than we should be.
Yeah. I mean, that was really the conclusion we had from our tech strategy, was that you have a lot of the elements already, right? You have, you have a lot of tech companies already, but they don't know about each other. At the time, they didn't. Now, after a couple of years, they've started to make networks, and they've started to make connections. You have a terrific community college with an amazing robotics program and other STEM programs. You've got a lot of bio-science, you've got a great entrepreneurial culture, you've got a super-business-friendly city. So you have a lot of what you need, but you just didn't have an identity as a tech sector, and folks didn't know each other. So we, our view is, for a relatively low cost, you can make an investment in this as a city, attract other private capital, and just propel yourself pretty quickly into the next rank. Because right now, you know, when we wrote this two years ago, nobody really thought about Glendale as a tech center, and then your staff has been amazing about marketing Glendale since then. Now we need the next step, which is a geographic identifiable initiative, like an accelerator or an incubator, but I think the accelerator might make more sense for you all, where people will be looking to that, right? So quickly, what we think the benefits of an accelerator for Glendale are, it's got a competitive dynamic, you know, as I was saying to Councilmember Agajanian, it's not just any random tech company. Like, you've got to compete to get in here, right? And that creates its own dynamic. They connect startups with mentors and experts from their fields, so it's not just some random mentor, it's somebody who knows their field. And then it's a way to help Glendale startups that are already here, but also maybe draw some other startups that may not have considered Glendale, but because you have this accelerator, okay, we'll come and hang out in Glendale, we'll get our mentorship, maybe we'll consider renting space here as we grow. It gives you a chance to highlight what you can offer them. And then, lastly, we have heard a lot of support, and Councilmember Devine and Mary Sonnian, you were at that Innovation Leaders Breakfast. When we went around the room, they were pitching heavily for an accelerator. It was interesting, and some of them were even saying, oh, I know financing, I know how we can, how we can make this happen. So it's important that there's local support embedded. This isn't something from the top down, this is actually being generated from the tech community itself here in Glendale.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
This starter company comes forward, we get the mentor, let's say.
Yeah.
And the mentor comes and helps for free?
Yes.
Why they do that?
They do that because they want to, say, check this company out and see if it has anything going, and if it's successful, and if they move, then maybe they invest in them. Or maybe they'll become, they will co-invest in a different venture. It's what happens in Silicon Valley, is that it's a small, tight-knit community, they're serial entrepreneurs, there's a way to start these companies and scale them, and they start one, doesn't work so well, okay, we'll start another one, that one went well, we sell, we make money, we start a new one. And you create this virtuous cycle of folks who are used to doing this, used to identifying talent, used to identifying great ideas, have access to, already access to a stream of capital that is a repeat player, and they want to keep that cycle going, because that's what they do. They're serial entrepreneurs. So some of these mentors may have started three or four or five businesses already. They start it, they scale it, they sell it, they make money, they go to the next one. And so they're looking at these mentorship relationships as a potential investment for themselves. That's why it's free.
Just maybe I don't have to ask you, but is there a budget we are allocating for this? I understand we give $50,000, but entire money which we allocate, how much it will be?
So I, what we're, I'll move quickly, because I know I'm a little over time. The proposal is that the city would put up $50,000, and in the RFP, we're requiring bidders to bring in twice that amount to bid, so we want them to bring $100,000 to the table, and then they can bid.
Very sorry. $50,000 for one business?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Entire.
$50,000 for the year, for the accelerator.
Can we go through the report and get to that point?
Okay.
Because I think we need to hear the report and then get to.
Okay. I'll move it along, Mayor. So the goals here, we want to be really clear on what the goals are. We want to showcase your local startup community and give your companies, emerging companies, the tools they need and the support they need to thrive here. The idea is like, they like it here, they succeed here, they want to stay here. We want to connect your companies to local entrepreneurs and innovators with the programming that's offered at this place, with the mentorships and the business development, because you want to create that cluster of tech companies that keeps investing in each other. So these are objectives that are listed in the RFP. The idea is you're going to establish, launch, and operate a tech accelerator program. We're going to ask the bidders, your goal is to establish this thing and operate it, create a marketing and recruitment plan, develop the programming that's going to include things like the business coaching, the networking, and investment opportunities. We also want you to develop quantifiable metrics, so we can tell whether you're being successful or not. We want you to identify matching funds, and as we said, it's two-to-one. If we put in $50,000, the city puts in $50,000, we expect the operator to bring in $100,000, okay? So that's $150,000 for this first cohort to create the programming. Or in-kind services as well. So for example, maybe one of the bidders has a relationship with CBRE, and CBRE offers to throw in some brokerage services so that when these companies emerge from the accelerator, they can find the right space here in Glendale, whether it's manufacturing or office space. And then, we also want to emphasize that we want to have local Glendale-based companies in this cohort. This is about Glendale investing in Glendale. We'd be happy to attract some other companies that might be interested, but we also know there's a lot of talent here in Glendale, so we want to keep it open, but there is an emphasis on Glendale. Okay. Let me quickly highlight a few more things. So here are the key points from the RFP. Individuals, private companies, venture capitalists, nonprofits, academic institutions are qualified to bid, and we're really encouraging them to team up, right? We want a team, really, that can offer a full suite of services. But it's key that they have to demonstrate they've done this before and they've been successful, so that's the qualifications. The program plan is that a minimum of six weeks of programming. We also want them to tell us exactly how they intend to recruit promising companies. We think they can tap into the talent base that we've already identified in Glendale. Folks like the Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, which is a really strong chapter here, Tech on Tap, Glendale Community College, there's a number of ways they can find companies to bring into the program. We want them to tell us if they have a particular technological focus. I showed you some of the other examples. Sometimes people might focus on manufacturing, or bio-science, or digital. They don't have to, but they might want to. Maybe they want to do visual effects, manufacturing, digital health, I don't know. So we want to know whether they think there should be a specific tech focus. We want them to tell us the services they're offering, and then again, what are your metrics? How will we judge whether you've been successful or not? We're asking them for a funding match. I'll say it again, because I think it's really important. We put in 50, they put in 100. And then, on the space for the program, we've offered up, the city's offering up in this And then on the space for the program, we've offered up, the city's offering up in this RFP, two options, but they don't have to take them. One is the Plaza Bank at 250 North Orange, which is a 2,500-square-foot office space that you have just off of Grand Boulevard, if they want to use that, they can, or portions of the Glendale Central Library, because it has flexible meeting and office space, it also has a digital lab, a Makerspace, and other tech-focused amenities. So if they want to use those, great. If they want to use their own space, they can, but they have to identify space in Glendale where they're going to operate. And then lastly, and really importantly, we want them to say how their proposal connects up to this tech strategy that we've been working on. So we want them to emphasize Glendale-based companies, partnerships with Glendale companies, integration with Glendale's community at large, and we're asking them to suggest ways that they're going to connect to Glendale's tech community. So it can be things like, we're going to do stuff at Tech on Tap, which already exists, we're going to be doing a pitch fest at the Glendale Tech Week, or we're going to host something at Glendale Community College so that our JCC students can come and intern at the accelerator, that would be really cool. They'll have an open house. So we're, we gave them some suggestions, but we want them to tell us how they're going to bring the Glendale community into part of this process, even if it's hiring interns, we want to know how they're going to do that. So that's the RFP in a nutshell. The next step is, if you all are agreeable to this, we would release the RFP, market it widely, and we think the strategy will give you a pretty good impact for a relatively small investment, to kind of take you to the next level as a tech, tech hub. And with that, my conclusion, that concludes my, my presentation.
My, my questions are about the, the matching funds.
Yeah.
First of all, is that the usual, like, to, to double the, the investment, the logo, I mean, a hundred thousand seems like a lot of money, and is it refundable if they are not chosen?
Oh, oh, so the idea is, they would identify, hey, if we get chosen, we've got this hundred thousand we're going to put as part of the program.
Oh, I see, okay.
And so then, that would be, a hundred and fifty thousand together would fund the six-week or ten-week or twelve-week program. That's the idea. Is it typical? It is typical to go out, you don't want to fund this, you, you want them to have some skin in the game. And we've talked to quite a few folks who suggested that this was about the right amount, this two-to-one match made a lot of sense, given what you have been doing on tech, you guys are sort of getting on the, on the map a little bit with tech, that's a reasonable ask, and it's a great city to be in, so, yeah, that, we tested that with a number of tech people to see if that was the right amount.
So how do they recoup that money?
I'm sorry?
How do they recoup that money, or are these grants that are going to bring?
They might get grants, they might have a venture capitalist invested, who says, "Okay, I have a chance to look at, you know, fifteen new companies, kind of the first glance, I'll invest in this," right? So that's the idea, that, that's-
If someone will be willing to take the business risks just to be associated with the accelerator.
To be associated with it, and really get the first glance and the first shot at investing in some talent. So that's the idea.
Do you have more? No, Mr. Garp, can you?
You mentioned six weeks program?
Minimum, minimum.
So what happens after six or eight weeks?
So the idea after whatever the program term is, they would presumably be, finish up with the pitch fest, so what, the idea is by the end of this accelerator program, they're in a position to go pitch to funders, to take that next-stage investment. That's the whole idea, is to prepare them to scale. So it gets them, they've got a deck, they've got a pitch, they, they, they've, you know, run through all the traps, and they have connections to potential investors, now they go out and try to get the money.
So after that six to eight weeks program, if you want to continue, because we don't want this, this program to just be one, one-time program, right? We want it to continue, the accelerator to, to function like twenty, twelve months a year, or?
So-
So we, then we have to invest more at that time?
So what we've done is, we want to keep it flexible, we look at this as a pilot, and so the way we've written this is, it's a one-year program with the option to renew for two additional years, one year at a time. And that's why we've asked for metrics. We want to be able to see, were we successful? Were you the right operator? If we thought they did a good job, then we may want to extend, but we want to give flexibility. It's a delicate balance between giving yourselves flexibility, like, pull out if you don't want to do this anymore, but also giving them some sense that, okay, if I do a good job, there may be more money forthcoming, and we heard this a lot when we did interviews, is they want to have a sense that it's more than just a one-year commitment, but at least it's tied to performance. That was our idea, it's tied to performance. So we envision this as a three-year investment, potentially three years, but you're only committing to one year with this.
Of funding. So the, the two spaces that you mentioned was, one was the lib, somewhere in the library, and then-
They could use, you know, again, this is our suggestions, right?
Okay.
Or Brand Boulevard.
But where in the library, I'm trying to-
Well, the idea is because you have Makerspace and digital space, they might be able to use some of the conference rooms for some of the classroom work and some of the presentations, and then maybe they could use some of these tech spaces, the companies might be able to access that since it's there. It's the idea.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking of, you know, these tech people are very particular about the type of space that they use, it's usually standard, you know?
Yeah.
Open.
Exactly.
And easy to, for people to interact with each other, and I'm, I'm trying to imagine how the library would fit in that, I'm-
We just threw it out there.
Okay.
It's a suggestion, again, they can say, "Thank you very much for your suggestion, we've got some really cool space somewhere else that we propose to use, and, you know, we've got to deal with the, with the owner," you know?
And then the, the second space is the, the bank, I, I know where it is, but I just haven't been inside. I'm thinking if, if there's the need for some kind of tenant improvement, I mean, to, to bring it up to their standards, who's going to bear the cost of that?
So, again, this RFP commits you to fifty thousand a year.
Okay, yeah.
And the idea is, like, take the bank building, it's really just a place to gather and to, to do mentorship and all that, if they want to put in dividers or whatever, they can do that and equip it. We weren't thinking they were going to put in lab equipment or anything like that. If they need that, they're going to have to figure out arrangements somewhere else, right? It probably is not appropriate for that space, but let's see what they say.
Okay.
You know, let's keep it open. Yeah.
Okay, yes.
From the report, I understand other cities, they tried this before, right? This is not the new idea?
No, this is not new.
Nobody tried before.
No, this has been done all over the place, and it's a, a very well-tested practice in tech centers. I mean, Silicon Valley has a bunch of these, the West Side has a bunch of accelerators, L.A.'s done a few.
When you say, yeah, when you say try, what do you mean? They have them now, so it's not that they just tried it, they have them.
I know, but I want to see, what's the result? I mean, what was their, what they gained from this?
Yeah, so-
Is there something that we can measure, say, okay, they spent the money, and this is the result?
So the city of San Jose has done this a number of times, this is kind of a standard practice in tech world, so, again, it's hard to compare all of these different processes because they vary by city. Sometimes the city puts no money into, like, something like Santa Monica, that's such a robust tech hub that accelerators will just go in there and they don't need any money, right? Because they, they want to be in Santa Monica, it's really expensive, and they'll figure it out, because they want access to those tech companies.
I mean, I, if I can answer that question-
Yeah, please.
In Silicon Valley, the Silicon Beach, that's the result.
Yeah. You start-
What's the result? That's the result?
Yeah.
No, that's different.
How?[1566.11]